Bernie, Land Use Director, I'll do a roll call to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. So we'll start with Matthew Allison.
Present and can hear you.
Paula Bertram.
Present and can hear you.
And Matthew Brenner.
Present and I too can hear you.
Excellent. So, good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. And this meeting is be of the planning board is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread, and all town facilities are currently closed to the public. With the exception of Monday through Thursday, 10 to 2, outside of those hours, you can make an appointment. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order which you can find posted on the town's website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation. This meeting of the planning board will include public comment. For this meeting, the planning board is convening by Zoom video conference as posted on the town's webpage, with identification on how you can join using an internet-enabled device. Use the Zoom app or zoom.us and enter meeting ID number 87060964250. Again, it's 87060964250. If you do not have an internet-enabled device, you can call 888-475-4499 and enter that same meeting ID. Please note this meeting is being recorded. Some attendees are participating via video conference, and all those watching can see everything on your video. So please don't screen or show anything in your video that you don't want recorded for pop. With that, I will turn it over to the Chair.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bernie. So we have called the order. First order of business is public comment. Is there someone with public comment? I see Mr. Passios is on.
Yes, Matt.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll have some comments during the public hearing. I think I'll save them for then.
Okay, great. I'm glad you're here. Hopefully you can fill us in on the last TCP building meeting as well because I wasn't able to make it.
I'll do the best I can. There wasn't a lot of comp push, but I will tell you what I know.
That would be great. I think I heard Mr. Rogers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. A question. During the review of the warrant articles in the hearing, will you allow and will the committee allow comments and questions at that time? Or should we wait till the conclusion of the of the main body of the meeting and and at the ask the questions at the last chance for a public comment?
Oh, no. My understanding of public meeting, of public hearings is that they are able to afford the input from the public. So I will I will ask for public input when it comes up.
Perfect. All right. I just wanted us to know what the ground rules were going to be. Thank you. I'll look forward to hearing. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment? We will. We will get back to that at the end of the meeting. But I see no hands. Very good. Then we'll get right into it. Our first appointment tonight is 319 Highland Street. And it doesn't say anything more than that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jamie Rowe from Women of Bangham Associates, and my client this evening is Kevin Hill. Kevin would like, through myself, would like to have a very early informal discussion with the board with respect to 319 Highland Street. Mr. Hill has it under agreement. And Mr. Hill is opposing to go through the subdivision control process through a very small, short cul-de-sac. And early on, we identified one potential waiver that we're going to need very early in the game. That's why we thought we'd have an informal discussion with the board before we went forward. The property at 319 Howard has 16 acres and has 84 feet of frontage. 84 feet of frontage is problematic. Anytime you do a proposed roadway that's 50 feet wide, where that proposed roadway intersects the right-of-way or public way, the existing street, you typically need 100 feet of frontage because you have 25-foot radiuses on both sides of the 50-foot right-of-way. Here's a good example. When we designed Butterfly Lane for Mr. Crowley, where Butterfly Lane intersects Elmwood, you have radiuses intersecting both roadways. And typically, you have about 100 feet, sometimes more, depending upon the the bearing of the property lines. And the 25-foot radiuses are property lines only. So when we propose pavement, a paved road intersecting the existing paved right-of-way, the roadway itself, the pavement, will have a radius to it where it blends into the existing road. That will be maintained. There's no proposed waivers asked for that. We would be having, we would be asking for a potential waiver for the property line radiuses. And we would like to know what the board's opinion of that is early on in the in the process.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the coming and asking beforehand. I personally, I'm not in favor of granting waivers in general. I just, I think that the rules are the rules and if they should be followed. I'm looking at the GIS right now. It also looks like it's on a bend in the road. Have you approached the neighbor at? Well, the northerly neighbor, have you approached them to see if they'd be grant willing to grant access easement or something?
No, we have not. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be asking for an easement. We would probably be asking for a parcel of land to be deeded to us so that we can include it in the proposed right-of-way. But we have not approached any of the but any of the abutters. No.
Well, I just showed my hand. I'm honestly not in favor of granting waivers, but in 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 certain circumstances, I believe they're warranted.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, yes. I'll open it up to the board.
I would not be in favor of granting waivers for this type of request. I think that the radii are there for a reason. It's for safety. As you pointed out, there is a slight bend in the road there, and personally, I would not be in favor of granting a waiver for this.
So I guess I should ask what the request would be. What do you what do you actually?
Just asking what the opinion is of the board with respect to the potential granting of a waiver if we came back, if we came back before you with a preliminary subdivision plan and a definitive subdivision plan. Our attitude is if we come to the board and everybody is not in favor of this whatsoever, we won't pursue the project. But if but if there's a favorable opinion of the board that it's worth moving forward, and you may grant the waiver under certain circumstances, we'd be happy to go forward with the project.
Well, I guess I was asking specifically what you want, what you're looking to get waived. I mean, is it is it a radius requirement or is it a width?
Yeah, so we so Adam, if you could go back to the other other exhibit. So we you see the intersecting radii where Butterfly Lane intersects Elmwood. And you see the 25-foot radius on each side of Butterfly Lane. So typically, on 319 Highland Street, we would be extending that 50-foot right-of-way all the way to Highland Street with a with a radius less than 25 feet. So that would be, that would be the requested waiver. Yep.
So it's the 25 number?
Correct. Yep, yep.
And what would you be suggesting?
Oh, anything between 10 and 15 feet.
Oh.
Yep, yep. Yep. But then again, keep in mind that the property line radius has nothing to do with the paved radius. The paved radius where it intersects Highland Street will be the same whether we have a 25-foot radius or a 10-foot radius. Pavement radius will remain the same, and we will not be asking for a waiver for the pavement radius itself.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
I'm, I would very much echo what you and Mrs. Bertram have said as well in that just as, I apologize. You know, I apologize. I haven't, I don't have the gentleman's name in front of me, but oh, Mr. Rolt has presented. I would not be inclined to grant a waiver because it's, I understand that there's not a change in the pavement radius, so that may not necessarily be a safety issue. But I also see other issues with neighbors likely would like, we can't assume that neighbors don't want that full radius kind of as a buffer between them and a road that will be traveled regularly.
Well, I'm looking again at the GIS and the southerly neighbor has a 21.55-foot neck that's 200 some odd feet to his main property. Yeah, I especially given the the specific site constraints, I don't think I don't think it would be in your best interest to try that, especially given the input we've heard tonight.
Oh, fantastic. That's why we came on, came to the board early on. And like I said, if the board was not in favor of considering granting a waiver when we file a preliminary plan, we probably won't pursue the project. So I appreciate the time you've given us and your honesty. Thank you very much.
Well, Jamie, I certainly would encourage you to to look at the possibilities of the northerly neighbor there. They've got, they've got a corner there that's all woods.
Yep, yep. I appreciate the comment.
Certainly. And I appreciate the the pre-planning for your client.
Yep, not a problem at all. Great to see all of you. Everybody have a great night.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay. So next we have, and I'm going to have to say about this, but we have a 360 Flat Hill Road A&R Plan. And and I do have to mention for the record that I'm conflicted in two ways on this property. For one, it's across the street from my family farm. And for two, the PLS Alfred Berry, who prepared this plan, I work with him. I don't see that either one of those things is going to interfere with my deliberations or decision or anything to do with the A&R Plan. It's pretty straightforward. It's, it's pretty much a done deal. I don't see any reason that I would need to recuse myself, and especially given that we've only got three members currently, unless Hannah joined.
Hannah has joined.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't see any reason that I should need to recuse myself, but I did feel that I needed to make that known. Does anybody feel that I should recuse? Okay, then I guess I won't. Do we have someone presenting the plan?
It does not appear as such.
Okay, so we can't ask any question?
I mean, you can ask questions, but I don't know that there's an answer to them.
Okay.
I will note that it is stamped in as of, I believe, Tuesday of last week. So April 5th, which would one, two, could go to the 26th and still be, 26 would be the 21st day.
Okay. I guess I have, I have one technical question. I see, okay, so the two lots to the westerly edge that are on Watt Street, are those reduced frontage?
They appear to be.
And they abut two other reduced frontages on Flat Hill, but the regulation is very clear that they can't be contiguous on the same road?
I think it's contiguous frontage is the way that regulation reads. So this lot and this lot would need to be full frontage lots in order for this to be a legal set of frontage here.
And those are pre-existing?
They are. Pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay. I mean, this, this is, excuse me. This is the perfect case where I am in favor of landowners' rights and I'm really not in favor of having eight new neighbors, but it's not my property, so. I don't see any other issues. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have a question just for clarification. We were in receipt of of an updated plan. What is the date on that plan? I just want to make sure that I've got the right plan.
The plan that's up is the updated plan. It'd be easier to look at the paper copy. It's dated 4/9.
Okay, so 4/9 is the updated one. Okay.
Correct. This, it's this lot on the far westerly side that Matthew was just talking about. This line here originally was up in this vicinity. So they swapped some land between Lot 7 and Lot 8.
So I have a question. I'm not familiar with, not nearly as familiar with our regulations as somebody, as the other members of the board. And did I understand correctly that to have the two reduced frontage lots, you have to also have full frontage lots?
Yeah, per the bylaw, let me pull it up.
I also had a question about that frontage requirement as Matt was mentioning on Lot 8 and Lot 7. Because even though the lot, well, I guess it's to the easterly side, is pre-existing non-conforming, it would still need to be a conforming lot in order to do the 250-foot lots, correct?
That was where my question was going.
Well, I would say that that's a determination by the commissioner as to whether it makes it buildable or not. No two lots, which no more than two lots with such reduced frontage can be placed side by side. I would read that because it specifically lays out, unless it has twice the minimum lot area, it's saying that you can't create lots using this clause without having to require 100% frontage adjacent to any 250% frontages. But I think it's an interpretation thing. Because those two lots are not, they're not 50% frontage lots. They were created before this was even conceived of and were at least theoretically legal lots at that time. It may be that the building commissioner finds that he wouldn't issue them a permit on both of those lots. It also appears that there's a wetland system there. Is that what that is?
They look like wet flags.
It may, yeah. And so the the chances that the Conservation Commission were to deny them access over that under the limited project status because they've created their own hardship is potential as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Given the questions that we have, personally, I would like to move this out to our next meeting.
And and Adam, Adam at the beginning said that we had time on the clock for that?
We do. It would be, the 21st day would be the day because it is the day of the next meeting. So you would have to take action at that meeting, whether it was approval or denial.
But we can get feedback from the building official prior to that from the zoning?
Yep.
Can we, can we predicate our approval based on what the building official or the Conservation Commission were to say? I thought we could only base it based on some very limited factors for an A&R.
Yes, disapproval. Right. I don't, I don't see that we have any any grounds to disapprove this plan.
The question that I would have is the access, because is the location of that wetland, does that provide meaningful access on Lot 7?
You can pave wetland.
That's my one question is because the building, if the building official determines that that is in fact a wetland, thereby making it inaccessible.
Well, but the building official can't determine that. Only Conservation can. And and then.
But they've depicted, but they've submitted a plan showing wetland flags along the frontage, which is access to the lot. So on the plan that we have, I'm questioning the viability of that frontage. And we can't, we can't permit an A&R without adequate frontage, and I'm questioning the adequacy of the frontage on Lot 7.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that you can't question that or we can't have that discussion. I'll have to to look back because if I'm recalling correctly, case law doesn't favor denial by wetland. It, it, the case law for denial of adequate frontage is usually if there's illusory frontage where it's, it's on a road that is either not constructed or there's a significant topographical impairment.
But.
I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is.
It has to be meaningful access. And we had this, the case, and I can't remember what where it was. It was somewhere over on Lake Shirley, where because of the steepness of the slope, the building official questioned the viability of the access. It was a corner lot, and he questioned the viability of the access. And I would question it based on the fact that there's a wetland along the frontage. So I mean, I guess they can proceed at their own risk, but you know, does a wetland trigger accessibility issues for the, for the zoning officer?
No, it doesn't for the zoning officer. It would for Conservation, and they could practically stop it in in some instances. And again, my understanding of case law and my recollection is that wetlands don't create illusory frontage, but topography or the non-construction of a road do.
I have in my.
I'm willing to follow up on that question and bring bring additional information back. I'm not trying to get you to change your mind. I just want you to be prepared that that's the direction that it could go.
I have in my notes from the webinar and that maybe nine-ish months ago that specifically, we can't, that basically, we cannot deny, we cannot deny because it might be disapproved, the Conservation Commission may not approve based on the wetlands. It would have to be if the wetlands prevent, created a physical barrier that was, you know, prevented practical, safe, and efficient access. And I, and I think, Paul, I hear what you're saying, that we don't know anything about those wetlands and if they do or do not. Is that what I understand?
That's exactly what I'm saying is, is do they prevent access to the property? I understand what you're saying about Conservation may or may not. They may allow a wetland crossing. But my question is, do the wetland, and it's very difficult to see on this plan. I wish the engineer was here because he might be able just to address this. But if the wetland goes along the entire frontage, my question is, does it prevent access to the lot? And and so what you just read, Matthew, seems to indicate that depending on what that wetland is is the key. So so that's my question. And I can't tell what's on the other lot. Can you zoom in at all, Adam, on that?
On which one?
Is it a wetland or is it a stone wall?
This is the stone wall, and these are B flags.
Yeah.
So there's actually, it looks like two wetlands because there's series B flags and a series of C flags.
So does it obstruct both lots?
It appears to obstruct at least some of both. So it, Bs do this.
So really, do they only have 25 feet of accessible frontage? I can't tell with this.
It's not the clearest.
So personally, I would like clarification of that before we approve this plan. I don't have a problem with the plan as a whole, but I do have a problem with those two lots.
Well, let's, let's look at the Lot 5 and 6 as well because it looks like they can get around the wetland, but they're entirely within the buffer for Lot 6. And Lot 5, I don't know, there's, there's no minimum upland for an A&R process, is there, Adam?
No, there is for buildability.
And and it's not reported there?
Yeah, it just says 89,000 square feet, and that's in the outlying. So they would need a minimum of 76,000, 72,000 square feet of upland.
Yeah, and the accessibility for Lot 6 is really questionable as well, and Lot 5. Well, no Lot 5 could go.
Lot 5 is all buffer zone here.
Flat Hill Road, yeah.
And I mean, Lot 6, they.
Have to go completely through a wetland.
Well, they have to go through the buffer zone.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Project.
Yeah, it was difficult to see. I see it now.
Because there's, there's 38 feet, and even if you set off five feet for the requirement, so that gives them 33. I mean, you're probably talking 18 for a driveway at most.
Okay.
So is is upland exclusive of only the wetland or the wetland and the buffer zone?
It's exclusive of the wetland.
Good. So then they may be fine there. I think it would behoove the the client, was Mr. Matson? I think it would him to to come to our next meeting. I mean, also, Flat Hill Road is a scenic road, and there's a considerable amount of stone wall there. That I don't know actually necessarily shows up on this. Well, no, the other stone wall doesn't either.
Well, I don't think we can take stone wall into account, can we?
Scenic road.
Yeah, I mean, you can when you get into the scenic road. It does cover a fair amount of it. Most of the whole length of Flat Hill. Not for the A&R, but you, also he needs to to go through prior to doing any building.
Okay. It was, it was a suggestion, I think it was from Paula, that we continue this to the next meeting?
Yes.
Is everybody in favor of that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, just one point of clarification here. Can we kind of come up with a process for people submitting plans and then updating them? Because I feel like in this situation, we didn't get the updated plan until the 9th. And so really, the clock should start then. And I realize that they submitted their application prior to that. But if you submit an app. But if you submit an application and then swap out the plan, which is the entire body of work essentially that we're looking at, I feel like at that point you should be making a new application and not paying another fee or anything, but resetting the clock.
That sounds fair. Sounds reasonable.
Well, and we, we received this plan today, not, not even on the ninth.
Okay. All right. So even then, I mean, I just feel like in this situation, it puts a town in a compromised position in terms of the clock. Um, and things were swapped out at the last minute, which I completely understand, but at the same time, I don't feel like it should compromise the town's position. Um, if the applicant wants to make the change, that's all.
Okay. So do you, do we need a motion and a second and a roll call vote to continue?
Probably the best plan.
I would make a motion to continue this hearing, uh, to our next meeting, which is.
Not a hearing.
I'm sorry, the next meeting.
The plan.
To, to continue the A and R, uh, to our next meeting.
It's second. Sixth, April?
Now, what, our, our next meeting, April 20th?
That's correct.
Right.
And is that adequate?
Yes.
Okay. And we need a second?
I would second.
Okay. Now we have to roll call vote. All in favor. Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
And an I for myself. Um, and I would, I would also, are you, are you going to be able to reach out to Mr. Matson?
Uh, yes, yes, I will.
Okay. Um, yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, it, it's all, it's all at his peril, basically, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Um, so next order of business, we have a public hearing for our zoning warrant articles and I have a little Didi to read for that. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 12th, 2021, 6:35 PM via Zoom video conference to make alterations to the code of Lunenburg, to the code of the town of Lunenburg, Mass. Chapter 250 zoning, Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 250, 4.1 H5, two-family dwelling and Article 6, General Provisions Affecting All Districts, Section 250, 6.1, off-street parking and loading areas. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office, 960 Mass Ave, Lunenburg, Mass. In accordance with the governor's order suspending, this is all what you read earlier, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we're open.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Passios has his hand up.
Um, yeah. Okay. Start us off, Dave. Hello?
We can't hear you, Dave.
I don't even see him.
There we go. Yeah. Sorry about that. I shut the mic off also. Um, yeah, I'd like to ask a general question first of all, and that is that when I see a, a wholesale change in a whole section um, in our bylaws or, uh, code of Lunenburg or anything, um, the first question that comes to mind is what was wrong with what was there? And what are we trying to fix? And then I have some specifics, uh, to bring up that I'd like to, uh, if I could get a general answer to, you know, why the planning board decided to go through this process for the, uh, off-street parking?
Well, honestly, Dave, I don't think we had much at all on the books to cover parking requirements for these various uses. And Adam can correct me or Adam, why don't you, why don't you answer?
Well, if you let me run through the slides, then maybe your questions will get answered.
Okay, let's, let's do that. We'll, uh, I'll save the questions for later.
Very good. Thank.
I gotta move it around. It's hard to see. Uh, so tonight we're having a public hearing to do two articles for town meeting. One is to add to the definition of two-family dwelling and the other is to update the minimum parking calculations. Uh, mostly to reflect the new use table and the parking needs that are sort of outlined by contemporary society and a higher, uh, traffic volume and more driving happening. Uh, so we'll start with the easy one, the definition of two-family dwelling. We're looking to add one sentence to it. That is, the two-family dwelling should have 1.5 times the required lot size for the zoning district in which it was located. Uh, this for many years was included in the protective bylaw, uh, back before the use table. Uh, somewhere in the 18 to 24 months that we worked on the use table, uh, it was omitted from the definition. Uh, and it was not caught when it was passed in 2008. Uh, I had recent cause to have a discussion with someone about a two-family home, uh, and I was pretty sure it needed one and a half. Uh, they said, oh no, it's not in there. It's not in there. So we looked and looked and it wasn't. Uh, so we're looking to create, uh, to amend a clerical error. Uh, and this would mean all two-family dwellings need one and a half times whatever the zoning district requirements are for lot size. This wouldn't apply to accessory dwelling units because those don't reach the two-family definition. They have their own definition, uh, and they would be allowed on any uh, legally conforming or legally non-conforming lot that exists as long as they met the standards outlined in the definition. So if anyone has questions on two families, uh, we can cover that. If not, I can move on to parking, which I think is the sexy stuff everybody's here for. All right. So parking calculations, minimum parking calculations. These are not maximal. These are the minimum parking calculations. So if someone wants to build 10 times this amount of parking, they're more than welcome to do so. Uh, our current standards don't reflect the uses and the use table is really a number one. Uh, the categories don't necessarily line up and the way that parking is calculated is uh, a little bit wonky. Uh, the uses that are listed in the text, uh, are nearly 40 years, uh, as for the uses that aren't listed in the text. Uh, there is a manual that's nearly 40 years old that we're directed to, to, uh, use as a way to determine what would be adequate parking. Uh, and this is just off in a lot of different ways, in my opinion. Uh, if we want to determine parking for something, we should either assign it to someone to determine, assign it to a group to determine, or, uh, as this board has chosen to do, give parking calculations for outside of very specific circumstances that have other approval, uh, standards within them. So the minimum calculations, um, don't cap, don't include employee parking in any way. Uh, they don't focus on the increased transient nature of our society and the increased car focus that our society has, uh, and thus we run into, uh, instances in certain areas where parking is inadequate. Uh, I know many people will point to probably our largest retail facility in town, the Walmart in Hanaford and say, you've got all this parking and nobody uses it all the time and that's great. Um, those places build the amount of parking that they think that they need per their model or they meet the local bylaws. Uh, that development is nearly 30 years old. Uh, and I imagine that there are times when the parking is used significantly, uh, and they've made a business decision. Uh, so it, it, it kind of cuts both ways. We have other uses in town that are small, local mom and pop places that have had, um, parking issues due to their success or due to finding a good deal on a location that, uh, really didn't meet their needs from, uh, a, a, a parking perspective. And more often than not, our, uh, retail locations are becoming destinations as opposed to stops. And so that increases the need for parking. So I, I, I could run through the chart that you all have. Uh, I can pull it up if you'd like to see it. Uh, but really I thought some illustrations of what the differences would be, uh, are, are important. So a professional office that's 4,300 square feet, uh, of gross floor area and has a net floor area of 3,400 square feet. Under the existing bylaw, we require five parking spaces. So it's one per thousand feet of gross floor area apparently, uh, instead of gross floor area. Uh, and so based on the way that the old bylaws written, you would also need 1,433 square feet of paved parking because it dictates a three square feet of floor area to one square foot of parking area ratio. Uh, I'm not sure where that comes from. It's a, uh, an archaic way of calculating parking need. Currently our bylaw, section 6.4 outlines the design standards for parking, stall size, aisle width, um, travel directions, all of that stuff. Uh, so once you decide how many parking spaces are need, all of that needed, all of that other stuff sort of falls into line by having it designed in a way that is safe and adequate for the public to travel off-street. Under the current bylaw or the proposed bylaw, rather, it would be 11 spaces that would be required to be one space per 300 square feet of net floor area. Uh, so again, there is an increase in the requirement. Uh, this does not mean that anybody who currently owns a business or office would need to meet the new calculations. They would become pre-existing non-conforming uses and they would continue that way until such time that they changed uses or abandoned use that was there. Just a couple more retail establishment, 5,800 square feet of gross floor area, 4,200 square feet of net floor area. Um, there's no minimum parking requirement for retail under our current bylaw. There's just an amount of paved area that's required. Under the proposed bylaw, it's one per square, 250 square feet of net floor area. It would, uh, equal about 17 parking spaces. Uh, to give you an idea, uh, 5,800, 5,800 square feet uh, is probably, uh, a little more than a third of the CVS we have here in town. That's probably a 1,500 square foot gross footprint. Uh, so they have drastically more than 17 parking spaces. They probably have uh, upwards of, of 45 or more. Uh, I know, uh, that this was a, an item that was brought up at the last meeting uh, as them having too much parking. Uh, again, I, I don't know what precipitated their parking the way that it is. Often companies like CVS have a standard plan, uh, A, B, C, and D. They pick a site, they pick the plan out of the drawer and they say, this is what's going to work here. Uh, so that may be something that CVS decides they need to do for, for their clients. Uh, minimum part calculations for restaurants. Right now our restaurants are calculated per table. So a restaurant with 10, uh, four tops, five, six top, six tops, uh, and 12 bar seats with 18 employees on the largest shift currently would only need 21 parking spaces because it would be one per table, one per two seats of owner, uh, and the employees are just kind of on their own Mad Max style to figure out where they're going to put their vehicle. Uh, under the proposed bylaw, it would be total of 46 spaces. It would be 28 spaces because it's by seat. So it would be one space per three seats. Now there's total 82 seats at this restaurant. Uh, and then it would be 18 spaces for, uh, the employees on the larger shift. And we get, again, get a total of, of 46. Uh, and finally, uh, not that we have a ton of warehousing, but it's kind of the next big thing that we would, we would look at, uh, a 200,000 square foot, uh, gross floor area warehouse that has 180,000 square feet of net floor area and 25 employees, uh, currently would be 200 spaces because it's, uh, one space per 1,000 square foot of anything that's not residential. Now theoretically, we could go to the parking manual and there may be some other calculation within that, but uh, reading the way the bylaw reads, one could interpret it to say that you need 200 spaces. Under the current bylaw, it would be 20 spaces. It'd be 10 spaces, one per 2,000 square feet of net floor area, uh, for the first 20,000. Then it'd be 16 spaces, one space per 10,000 square feet of net floor area over 20,000. Uh, it says or one employee on the large, or per one employee on the larger shift, um, which would have been, uh, 25 spaces. So the most it could have been was 36. So again, drastic difference kind of outlining, uh, a, a nonspecific parking calculation to one that, excuse me, the board went through very diligently and looked at use by use and said, we think this makes sense for this use and we think this makes sense for these other uses. And that is the end of my presentation.
All right.
If you'd like, I will put up the, uh, chart. All right. So Mr. Passios.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, okay, that explains a few of the concerns I did have. Uh, interesting that, that that last, um, example, uh, decreased the requirement by quite a bit, but I can understand that because you're, you've got some gross space there that all it is is storage. It isn't drawing people onto the property, uh, with vehicles that need to be parked. Um, a couple of my concerns as I look through this and picked out a few individual things. Um, was one that I keyed in on is childcare facilities. You've, uh, in effect, and tell me if I got this wrong, you've in effect doubled the, uh, required number of spaces because you've gone from one space per 10 children to one space per five children.
Uh, I think that's probably a reasonable thing to say.
Okay. Uh, then the next, uh, comparison would be an office building. Um, if you indulge me a little bit, take a 30,000 square foot office building. Um, have that the effective floor space. And can you tell me these number of spaces required under the present versus the new?
Sorry, can you say that again?
Yeah, 30,000, uh, 30,000 square foot effective floor space of an office building. And what the numbers are related to the existing reg, regulations now and when these new regs are put in place. I believe it at least, it at least doubles or triples.
You said effective, do you mean net?
Net, excuse me, yes.
And what's the gross floor area of this office building?
It'd be some small amount above that. It would be, and, and I'm not familiar with what different, differentiate.
We'll call it, we'll call it 35,000 gross.
Okay.
So. He said office.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm trying to do calculations and.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind while he's calculating that, I'd make, I'd like to make one more point and then I'd probably be done for the evening unless something else comes up.
Okay.
Um, the increased amount of parking spaces that these new regulations are going to require pretty much across the board with some exceptions. Uh, also concerns me with stormwater runoff regulations, um, in place and more coming down the road and the need for mitigation of increased impermeable surfaces. So as I said, for this office building, if it doubles and or triples the impervious surface, then it also inadvertently adversely affects the cost to mitigate the stormwater runoff. Is that an appropriate assumption?
Well, it is and it isn't because we don't require, we don't, we don't technically require it to be paved. We require it to be durable and dustless. So if someone comes forward with a proposal to have a stone dust parking lot, uh, aside from, aside from having to probably paint the lines every year, uh, that's, that's pervious. It, it, it would increase the runoff rate, but would not, would not be like pavement. It would, it would be a C N value of something like 80 rather than 98.
Right.
So like 80. But.
Correct. Uh, my point is that anybody that's going to build a half decent office building, uh, is not going to have a dirt parking lot.
That's very true.
So, so it is an effect, um, you know, affecting both the issues, impervious, uh, surface and uh, stormwater mitigation and. A stormwater mitigation. And my last question to you, because I know you are the representative of this. Uh, committee to, uh, stormwater. Have they reviewed this?
No, actually, we've only met once in the last year plus and that was recently. So.
So it would be thirty five full under the current by law, it would be one hundred under the new or the proposed by law. And I think that if we look at a thirty five thousand square foot. Office building with thirty five parking spaces. That seems wholly, I, I don't think most people in the office building are gonna have a thousand square foot office. Uh, and I think that if we were to, uh, use, uh, an example that you're probably familiar with from the past year or so, the TCP. Most of the offices that are being made it out in that building are between a hundred and eighty and three hundred square feet.
Yes.
So at three hundred square feet, you're, uh, in most instances providing one parking space for each office. And in the event that offices are larger than that, or there are fewer offices and some conference room. You're providing additional parking for those folks who would be coming for meetings onsite that don't work there. Our salespeople, our representatives from other companies, our, uh, wh- wh- whomever may be coming to the office to conduct business. Uh, and while I, I, I understand and I share your concerns about stormwater runoff. Uh, these would be private developments to be managed and mitigated and handled by the private property owner. And while it may be a cost increase, we are. By far not the only community who will be requiring these same stormwater standards. And we are not anywhere near the only community who would have parking standards within the same. Uh, rational calculations. Uh, these are fairly standard industry. Parking calculation numbers in, in twenty twenty, uh, or twenty twenty one now, now that we've kind of escaped the year of, of. The Dooster Fire, but, uh, so I, I don't think there. We're not creating a harsh or, uh, over-regulated or wildly out of character. Uh, set of calculations that someone's gonna come here and look at that and go, I could never do that. These are, I mean, you could, you could pull up towns from Newton to Shrewsbury. To Chicopee, to Amherst, and I know some of these are larger communities, but they're doling out parking calculations in very similar. Uh. All parts and, and some even, even more specific. And if they're lower calculations, oftentimes they're also allowing for community off-street. Or shared parking facilities that, that we don't have and aren't feasible in a, in a community like Newburgh.
Mr. Chair, if I could, uh, just throw out one more quick question and then I'll be done. Y- you mentioned, uh, this being affecting the private sector, uh. Put that thirty thousand, uh, foot building in a municipal project. Uh, does it not have to follow these requirements?
It depends, well, it, it would depending on, on where we're located.
Okay. The reason that came up, just so, so I can give you a very quick background on it, is we were sitting in one of the TC Passios design meetings. When we were talking about cost-cutting measures, uh, from the original numbers. And one of the things we started to talk about was the fact that we had something like a hundred and fifty six parking spaces calculated into that project. Um, and the architects had told us weeks before that, based on their calculations of the, uh, present, uh, regulations. We only needed fifty fifty six to accommodate the building. Uh, but then the question came up, okay, if the new regulations go in place, what happens? It brought us back to the hundred and fifty.
Well, it doesn't because the village district has its own parking requirements contained within that section of the bylaw. And this bylaw defers to, uh, other existing parking calculations as outlined. Uh, so within sections of, uh, section, uh, I think it's five, four, five, five and five, six. At least five, four and five, five, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the, the mixed use and the planned residential development. There are some other, um, numerical calculations for parking and those would supersede. These in, in projects that fall under that, uh, same with the village district, there is a, a parking table within the village district. Specific to properties within that district.
So at this point, I'd have to, uh, hope that the architects were using those regs and not anything outside of the district.
Yeah, and, and, and the, the, the other benefit or, or, uh, thing built into the village district is you are allowed to park. Off-site within a quarter mile of your project, um, in either an owned or leased facility. Uh, and the, the thinking at the time that the village district was created is, is this creates more workability, creates more people on the feet. More people on the ground and, and fosters the type of retail, uh, and, and interactive development. That, uh, folks were at the time stating that they wanted for that area.
Okay, thank you very much for your answers.
Very good. Are you gonna, are you gonna sign off, Dave?
No, I'll stay on.
Okay, because I would love to have you give my committee report if you wouldn't mind.
As I say, there isn't much to it, but I will, uh, help you out with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please. Mr. Rogers?
Thank you. Dave Rogers, eighty two Highland Street. Um, I, I have a few questions, the first of which. The first of which is, um, with regard to the, the two-family, uh, parking situation. Uh, I wanna, I wanna reference the, uh, the newest two-family house, um, on Main Street. Um, and you, you should go by there sometime if you haven't already. And it, it shows that, uh, there is, uh, really a, a, a need for some parking.
No.
No?
Go on. I agree.
Um, so, uh, I mean, it, there's a parking on the road and what have you. Um, the question I had, uh, one, one of the questions I had was with regard to the proposed, uh, uses. That we have for town-owned property, um, and wh- where does, where does this fall in? What, what kind of requirements, uh, must they, um, uh, refer to? Like the town hall. The town hall has no parking, none.
Well, the. Uh, it, they would, they would, it would be the most closely associated use to that municipal. Uh, building.
What does that mean?
So if we had a, um, the DPW. Is a good example because it's not in the village district. It has a significant garage area. Uh, for repair and storage. It has an office area. So the current calculations would be done. The office area would meet the requirements for office. The garage area would meet those for probably a repair garage. The salt shed might need it for storage and distribution, and then those would all be aggregated into a total number. So the town hall would be an office building. It would meet office parking.
Okay, but it doesn't have any.
No, it's got five feet of land all around, all around it.
It's also a pre-existing non-conforming use. Uh, at the time, up until two thousand fifteen. Um, the town hall didn't lot size setbacks, uh, frontage for the district that it was located in.
Yeah. Uh, Adam, uh, as respectfully as I can, I can, uh, muster the words for, I think. Uh, the, the analysis that whomever, uh, came up with these numbers about, you can pack. A quarter of a mile away from a, a, a structure. And it's in conformance with, uh, the concept of people walking and all of that stuff. That is not correct in my mind. I mean, uh, nobody in their right mind wants to walk a quarter of a mile. So that they can, uh, get into the village district, which everybody thought would be a, a boomtown and it's turned out to be a bust. Uh, so I mean, uh, th- that to me is, is ludicrous. Um, so ra- rather than, than, than looking, uh, at a bunch of words and numbers, I, I try to. Uh, make specific references to, um, individual situations like the Rida. Um, how big is that? How much, uh, parking is really needed? And, uh, is there sufficient parking, uh, for that? And the, the next would be whatever we're going to do as a community, um. If we head down the old primary and, uh, the, the, the main concern that I have. Uh, is the, uh, the parking issue, well, not the main, one of the main, uh, cons- uh, concerns I have. Is with the TC Passios re- renovation is, uh, to make sure that we have plenty of parking because. Uh, I, I saw what happened, uh, with the primary building, uh, off of Mass Ave. It's woefully inadequate. When they have a parent-teacher's situation, I mean, you, you can't get in there. It, it brings about all kinds of problems with public safety and police and fire and ambulances and all kinds of stuff, so. Uh, you know, I, I, I think that really has to be looked at very, very closely. Um, now, the, the, the two, let's go back to the two-family, uh, situation again. Uh, the two-family situation, as I remember it, because I was on the water board, uh, commission at the time, um. Uh, there was a uptick of, of required square footage and the thought was to protect the aquifer. Because it was proposed that, that most of these new buildings, uh, would be in the, uh, uh, outlying areas. Uh, at the time, as a reference, Dana Foote, uh, was, was building two-family houses and that kind of thing down. Uh, in that area. So, um, I, I, I think that was the, the moving, um. Requirement, uh, for that. And, uh, with, with sewer and a whole bunch of other things, I, I think that, uh. Uh, there's really two issues, parking and, and square footage requirement. So I, I think that really has to be looked at. Uh, some time ago, um, we, we talked about, uh, restaurants and specifically, uh, the, the Conrad situation. I would hope that nothing would, would, uh, be proposed that would, uh, adjust that. Uh, at all for the Conrad's because it's a, it's a mainstay for the community. Uh, it works. Uh, people come in, people come out, they take it and, and sure, uh, God bless them. I, you know, it's great when they're, when they're, uh, uh, packed. And, and that's what we hope for because that means they're, uh, you know, they're doing okay. So, um, you know, this is, this is a real, um, very, very, uh, iffy situation. I- in my mind, the parking and, and it's really, um, something that I think needs a lot more study. The question I have, uh, relative to the industrial end of things, and I, I don't remember the numbers that you folks used. The, uh, the, the large, uh, how many parking spaces I, uh, are you saying that we need for a large warehouse complex?
It depends on the square footage of, and the, the number of employees at, at said warehouse. And, and.
Absolutely, but I mean, you know, let's, I mean, yeah, yeah, let, let's say that it's a two hundred thousand or a hundred thousand square foot. Uh, complex, uh, warehouse complex. How many, how many spaces do we need under the new proposal?
Well, why don't we go back to the example you presented?
That's what I'm going to. Uh, it would be twenty six for a hundred and eighty thousand square foot net floor area square foot warehouse.
And under the old, it would be two hundred.
Correct.
Under the old, it was, so that's an improvement. I, I, I had it just the opposite. So that's great. That's good.
Okay, and Dave, I wanna, I wanna take a minute to address your concerns about Conrad's and, and other existing businesses. This doesn't retroactively apply to businesses that currently exist. This is for new construction, new use of property, new businesses, not for. Those that already exist.
Okay, all right. So what happens if, uh, and I hope they, 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 this never happens, but I. What happens if, uh, uh, Conrad's is, is sold? The, 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 must they come up?
Uh, to, to, to someone who operates the same business?
Um, maybe, maybe not.
Well, that, that's a, a distinct concern in that issue. If Conrad sells to.
Dunkin' Donuts.
To, to, to Dave Passios and he operates it as Passios's and he's selling fish and ice cream. Or operating substantially the same business, then it can be a pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah, okay.
Donuts were to come in and tear that building down, uh, they're gonna be under the, the existing by law. And, and they're gonna build what they need to build and they're gonna spend the money they need to spend because that's how those, uh, national chains operate.
Okay.
Um, all right. If, if I could speak, I, I just wanted to point out since I'm the person who, who brought up Conrad's in the discussions, uh, weeks ago. That was explicitly in the context of a business, uh, that in my opinion seems to be, seems to have, be well set up. And when we were devising these regs, the goal was not to say, how can we make life worse for Conrad's? Or even like, how can we do things that could make it worse? It was specifically, how can we make sure the businesses follow a model that's closer to what Conrad's? Has done because they have adequate parking, whereas our original standards would have literally said Conrad's could have. Could have, you could build Conrad's two today down the road with zero parking spaces or one parking space. For the entire, uh, for the entire takeout restaurant. So it was, the, the things that were brought up were explicitly kind of saying Conrad's has a good setup. What can we do to ensure businesses model more after that?
Great, all right. That's fine. Uh, well, those are, those are my, my comments and, um, you know, it's, it's always a. Uh, a tough go with, when you, when you're talking in the abstract here because, you know, I, I think you have to really pinpoint. A, a specific, you know, example, you know, like Dave's example of a thirty thousand square foot office building. Well. You know, I, I understand the, the, the reason for the example, but boy, I, I can't think of any place that, that Lunenburg would have a thirty thousand. Square foot of office building, but that's just me. All right, so thank you. Thank you for, thank you for your time.
And I need to make a correction. Dave, um, Passios, the, um. The Village Center District already has one per three hundred for, uh, office buildings.
Okay, so it already comes on without?
And that, that's in section four point seven. Section, uh, let's see, four point seven. Just lost it. Four point seven A six is the parking calculations for the village district.
And honestly, we're not gonna get any office buildings until we expand our sewer. You're not gonna have anybody build. Thirty thousand square foot retail spot without.
Anything.
Um, and, and I also wanna back up to Cherry Hill was the other, um, takeout similar to Conrad. And they don't have any paved parks. That's all durable, dustless, I believe. I don't think any of that paved.
Uh, it's durable.
Right.
I would, I would make an argument about dustless, but.
Yeah, well.
You too. Matt, could I throw out one more real quick one and, and there may be a simple answer to this. Uh, I, I'm just going back to the TCP discussions again, uh, over the months. Uh, is there, um, a trigger in the realm of a. I, I'm just gonna use the level three because that's all I'm familiar with, uh, with the terminology. But if, if a non-conforming, um, business were to completely renovate. Uh, building top to bottom and, and trigger what is equivalent to the level three we're seeing in TC Passios. But maintain the same use.
There's nothing that would, that would change that.
That wouldn't change. Okay, so there's no other triggers.
Is so different than the building code and I know one would think that they kinda like brought up against each other and, and share some things, but. Uh, it, it's, it, it, they're so, they're so very different as to what governs them. Uh, if the use remains the same, uh, it, it continues to be pre-existing non-conforming. So, I mean, you could even go from one office type to another office type to another office type. go from one office type to another office type to another office type and that part still remains pre-existing non-conforming, even if it's different users. You could go retail to retail to retail to retail a hundred times over and, and it's not a, it's not resetting it.
Thank you.
So while we're on this, I did want to make, I did want to point out one thing. The, the, what was sent to you, you were sent to um, uh, two versions of the, the calculations, uh, the parking calculations bylaw, and one of them includes an amendment for the floor. Uh, so it's the one space per three seats provided indoor or outdoor uh, that we had spoken about at the last meeting. Uh, by the time um, we had put that together, the warrant was already off towards print. So I asked that if the board is still in favor of including that in the requirements, that as part of the public hearing, they make that change in their motion. Uh, and then when I present on town meeting floor, I'll include it uh, as part of that and, and the floor amendment can be made and, and the session can be had on that going forward with, with that language included.
Um, Adam, I'm looking, I'm looking at the two copies. I don't see a single difference.
Uh, Restaurant Carryout. On the second page, the second page, uh, three up from the bottom.
Oh, there is a line next to it. Okay. Yep.
You, you can see it on your screen here in front of you in red.
Okay. Yeah. Just turn my head. Very good. Um, that, that is what we discussed at our last meeting?
It is.
But if, that's not in the warrant?
That is correct.
So, um, I, I don't, I don't think it, in my opinion, it doesn't make much difference what we do here tonight. I think we also need to make it very, very clear uh, at town meeting that, that that is, that, that was the intention of the, of the board. Uh, however, it did not make the warrant.
Well, from, from my perspective, if the board includes it in their motion, I can include that as part of my presentation of your report, that at the public hearing, the board voted to make this alteration uh, and would make the motion here that we add this to the text included in the warrant on the floor. And again, I will always uh, accept and encourage the board to stand up and support their articles, um, if they're so moved. And, and it does certainly provide some uh, basis for people to continue the discussion and, and to see that the board is passionate about the work they're putting forward. Uh, but if, if you think it's better to just do it on the floor, that's also a reasonable way to do it.
Well, that was just my thought. I'm just one of four here tonight. I wouldn't, yeah. How does everybody else feel?
Adam, are you saying that if we made the motion, then you could include that in your presentation as part of the descriptions? But if we hadn't made the motion yet, you really couldn't? Do I understand that?
I, I could, but the, the moderator always asked what the planning board's report was. I, I tend to give that. And if, if it was something that was made as part of this hearing, in, in my report, I could include a discussion of that motion. Not that I couldn't otherwise, it just, I think it, to me, it gives a little, the, the planning board had forethought. It wasn't like you guys at the last minute were like, oh no, wait. You know, this was part of the public hearing. It was, um, the public is, is here and participating and uh, you know, they've, they've had the opportunity to hear this discussion as well.
That makes sense to me. I would be fine with that, to make the motion here.
I, I would agree. So Matthew, if you want to make that motion, second it.
So what, what's the wording I'm supposed to use for this motion?
Uh, so you have two articles. Uh, you can take them collectively as one motion or you can do two separate motions. Uh, and you would be motioning that the planning board recommend favorably or not recommend favorably the articles. Uh, and on the parking one, uh, we recommend favorably, excuse me, uh, with the addition of uh, these, this, this calculation under Restaurant Carryout, the one speed seat per three, or the one space per three seats indoor or outdoor plus.
Ah. In that case, um, I would move that the planning board uh, recommend favorably on both articles. And in addition, that on article 29, the parking uh, article, that we will-
Hold on, uh, someone has posted a comment, which is correct. I think we need to close the public hearing before we make a-
True.
Did I just see somebody's hand go up?
Uh, Dave Passios, I was just about to say that. I'm assuming he just posted the uh, comment as well.
Yeah, he just said that we need to close the public hearing. So I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, I just have one quick thing to add before we close the hearing. I, either way, it could be part of our discussion, but there was a comment on, I think it was the outdoor entertainment, public utility as required of site plan approval. Do we need to address that?
Uh, it, it was more of a caution from Town Council that it can be challenging to do that through site plan approval. Um, but he said if the board is comfortable doing it, then, then that's uh, you can, you can do that. Um.
Yeah, but, but I think he raises a good point. Is that something that we can incorporate in site plan approval?
Well, now was my point when we were going through this. I was adamantly opposed to creating this situation because I feel like it's not nearly black and white enough. I mean, the whole purpose is to bring clarity and I don't think adding a subjective process to it brings clarity.
I would not disagree. I, I think that it's, as I said at the time that we talked about this, it's difficult to nail down outdoor entertainment as a singular parking calculation. Um, the outdoor entertainment uses are so variable. Um, the driving range at Whalen is outdoor entertainment as is uh, everything from go-karts to frisbee golf to uh-
Skaters, roller skating, all the stuff. We don't have any. Yeah.
Uh, uh, but, uh, and, and they, they all are so different, you know? I mean, how many people go and play frisbee golf and, and need parking on something that could be a 20 acre site? It, it could be five cars for 20 acres and you could have plenty of space. Uh, but you could have uh, an outdoor entertainment use that's on three acres that needs a hundred times more parking than that.
Right. Because it's live entertainment or being-
Yeah, or, yeah. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm open to any, we've talked about this several times and, and I, I, I understand what Tanner's saying and I understand that concern. Um, again, some of those uses require special permits, which would be an avenue that would uh, doing it as part of the special permit process, um, certainly makes that more uh, have a little bit more teeth. Uh, it's still, it's still subjective. Uh, assigning it to an individual to determine parking um, can be problematic as well because that's one person. And there, there hasn't been an update to any, uh, anything like the um, parking manual that I mentioned that was uh, that it's still, there, it's still operating on its 1984 publication date. Uh, so that, I don't think that's a particularly helpful tool in, in determining contemporary parking needs.
Well, and I guess for the purposes of these articles going to town meeting this year, we've got to kind of work with what we've got. But my response to all the different uses and different parking requirements would be to outline calculations for each substantially different use, whether it's live concerts or a go-kart thing or a driving range, just lay them out. Um, I think that's a lot easier. I'm just trying to avoid a situation where people need to go through multiple steps to figure this stuff out. I'd like somebody that's looking to put a driving range in or drive-in movie theater, whatever, to be able to look at a bylaw and look at a site without coming to us to figure out how many parking spaces they're going to need.
And, and I understand that. And I, my, my concern about try, when you try to list everything, you always miss something. And, and then you get into, that's, that's what my concern is. And I, I think that with a lot of the uses that we've talked about, those folks know what they think they need for parking. Uh, I worked in a community where Lowe's came to town and the calculations that were in place at the time said they needed like 1,200 parking spaces for the size of the store that they were putting together. And, and they petitioned uh, the town to reduce those spaces and were approved. And, and they said, listen, we know what we need. We're not going to, you know, if we needed 1,200, we'd happily build them. We don't need that many. We know what we're going to use. We know that we're going to use the bulk of them for a month to six weeks every year and we're happy to build those. So I, I think if we're talking about some of these outdoor entertainment places, most of those folks know what they, they need if they're entering into that type of facility. And if they don't, then um, I think that having the conversation through the site plan approval processes is a reasonable place to do that and, and for them to, to kind of work with the board to meet their needs and the board's needs.
I, I would tend to agree that we're not going to be able to identify all of the uses. I mean, it would be great that if we could, but I, but I would have to agree with Adam that we're not going to hit every use and there are going to be things that we, we hadn't anticipated. And, and as was said, that they're going to know better about what the, the individual requirements are going to be and they can provide examples of that. But I also understand Tanner's point that we need to be as all encompassing as we can. Um, and I think we did that, but I do share the concern, you know, if Town Council is saying that that's difficult to do under site plan review, you know, I understand that because site plan review has pretty restrictive limitations on what we can and can't do.
Well, and I think for this go around, there really, we don't have the time to try to address Town Council's concerns and my concerns to a certain extent, but um, just wanted to bring it up as part of the discussion.
All right. Is everybody um, done what they have to say? Close the meeting? Close the hearing?
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. Okay. Uh, so roll call. All in favor? Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Okay. Now we have to regurgitate that motion or-
All righty.
It, well, is there any further discussion? I mean, we, we've closed the public hearing. We can still discuss about the motion.
Um, I don't have any discussion on, on the motion, but I do want to point out, I, I did have a slight problem with what we said, but if you want to do three times more pavement, that's fine. In my opinion, that's not fine.
I said three times more parking. I didn't say pavement. I said parking.
So, well, okay. But, but I, I just want to point out that one of, one of my points is I would love to see less pavement and more um, non-pavements, non-paved surface and permeable surfaces. So just had to make that comment.
Well, and I have a question. Does stone dust qualify as dustless? It kind of seems like it's dusty by the nature of its name.
I, I would say stone dust is, is dusty.
I would.
Could use gravel if they chose to.
Are we in a place that we're comfy with me making a motion?
I think so.
Great. I would move that the board recommend favorably on both articles that are before us tonight. In addition, that on article 29, we would recommend a floor amendment to add on the Restaurant Carryout use category, uh, the additional part of the parking calculation to add one space per three seats provided indoor or outdoor.
So uh, all in favor, roll call. Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent. We have approved what we have deliberated on for a year. All right. So now we're, well, we have Bright Farms Phase One Land Development Plan?
Uh, I'm still waiting for Mr. Walsh to return his review. I should uh, see it in the next couple of days.
Okay. So we'll, we'll see that again next week?
Yeah.
Um, minutes approval? You've got two sets of minutes? We can approve them en masse or individually? Um, or we can have discussions about something that doesn't seem right?
I wasn't here, so I'm going to abstain.
I would motion to approve both sets of minutes from the March 22nd meeting.
Second.
Is that adequate, Adam?
Yeah.
Public hearing, yeah?
Um, yeah.
Okay. Very good. Um, so uh, all in favor of approving minutes? Um, roll call. Uh, Mrs. Bertram abstained?
Right.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Super. So now we're on to committee reports. Stormwater Task Force has not met since our last meeting. Uh, the Agricultural Commission will be meeting this Thursday. Um, and uh, if it pleases the board, I would like to let Mr. Passios, if he's still with us, uh, give us some information about the last TCP Building Design Committee because I was not there.
Yeah. That's the pleasure of the committee. I'm willing to. I hear no objections, I guess. Uh, Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street, uh, also a member of the TC Passios Design Committee along with Matt Allison. Um, as I said earlier in the meeting, uh, there wasn't a lot of big news that came out of the last meeting. Uh, the discussions with the architects and engineers on a number, a dollar number for the article to pursue a proposal for tear down and rebuild uh, was not available for that meeting. Um, there were some phone calls back and forth just previous to that meeting and we were given assurances that we will have that number the day before our next meeting, uh, which is April 21st. And I promised the Finance Committee I'd bring those numbers to them on the 22nd. Um, we had some discussion about preparing to go into annual town meeting. Um, as a committee, we've decided not to have the architects and engineers- As a committee, we've decided not to have the architects and engineers attend that meeting. We plan to give a more thorough, we'll call it an update, but more review of the proposal that's brought forward so far with approximately 15% decrease from the original number. And then look to be able to go forward with both avenues, assuming that the next article passes a town meeting. That's pretty much the report.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
All right, so now, open space ad hoc?
The Open Space Committee met on March 16th. We had the President of the Lake Shirley Improvement Corporation came in. As I've mentioned in the past, the Open Space Committee is looking for parcels that are town-owned and looking at their current uses. And Joanna Bowater attended the meeting relative to a parcel on Parmenter Road. It's 51 Parmenter Road with .31 acres. And she was to, with the loss of Camp David, they have lost, the LSIC has lost their meeting space, or their space that they used to have functions for the LSIC. And she wanted to talk about the use of the property on Parmenter Road for private use of the LSIC. The feedback from the committee was that apparently we're still in the investigation stage, but any parcel could not be used for private use without a public auction. And at this point in time, we're just looking at various parcels. And some members expressed concern that, you know, one of the goals from the Open Space Committee perspective anyway, and again, we're still in the very preliminary stages, is to improve public access to Lake Shirley. That wasn't the whole consensus, but it was that several members voiced that position. The Conservation Commission Representative Bob Pease has been going through parcels that are currently identified as conservation land and looking at the deeds. And he identified a property on Page Street, 374 Page Street, that is listed as conservation. However, the Conservation Commission is not controlling that parcel right now. It's 8.10 acres. Apparently, there's no title on the property, so he was going to meet with town council and look at the title of that property and looking at what options could be available for that property. His recommendation, and again, this is not a formal recommendation, but personally, his recommendation was that he didn't know that it would be useful for conservation. We did endorse, recommend endorsement of the APR Plan for Chase Road and Northfield Road to Pierce Tree Farm. And we decided to cancel our meeting for tomorrow night, and so we will meet in May.
Can you repeat the street number on Page Street that that parcel was?
374.
374, thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. I guess capital planning is next?
Okay, capital planning, we met on March 30th. And looked at adding, because funding is available, to add two additional prioritized projects to the plan, and that would be the Marshall Park Master Plan and the acquisition of the GPW vehicle. The addition, we also met, and actually, we just, we met after that additionally. We met just the other night. I can't remember the date. But it was specifically to talk about changes to our current policy on finance, our financial policy. And we voted to recommend that the amount to be considered for capital acquisition be raised from $10,000 to $25,000. So that will now go to the Finance Committee for review.
Okay. And so now we're up to our very first Economic Development Committee.
The Economic Development Committee met, and Kathy Clark will be the chair. And Adam did a great job of leading the meeting, and you can probably clarify some of these things. But we started to talk about goals and objectives, and we determined the first thing to do is to get more feedback from the local businesses. And what's working, what's not working, what issues that they see, ways that an economic development could help, an economic development could assist them. So our first task is going to be to put together a survey, and we're going to be reaching out to the Business Association as well as additional businesses. And so all of us were asked to put together some survey questions and forward them to Adam, who will compile them into a survey, and that will be one of the main objectives for our next meeting, is to put that survey together. Adam, I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, I think that's really the action items for right now. I think the committee is excited and has a lot of energy. I think there's a lot of ideas there. And I think doing the survey will identify probably some movement to an end point that the committee hasn't quite identified or has identified. And there's some intermediate steps there, but I think all around, it was a, it was a good meeting, and I think that there's a lot of excitement. And I think having new people involved who are business owners is going to be really helpful to this process. And I think after doing the business survey, really working on what economic development means in Lunenburg will be a big, a big task that this committee kind of has to nail down before they do too much else.
Right. Super. Excellent. Very glad to hear. It was a good meeting. So now we're on to Montruse Region Planning Commission?
MRPC met on March 25th for the April meeting. I had the wrong date on my calendar, so I watched it. I watched the video afterwards. Nothing of relevance really to Lunenburg. It was an abbreviated meeting. They had trouble hitting Quorum, I believe, due to the date change. So a good chunk of it was spent wondering if they could have a meeting, and then conducting a small amount of business and getting people to sign up for a couple of subcommittees. Nothing really relevant for our town.
Very good. And the Joint Transportation Committee?
Meets on Thursday. So I will tell you then.
Excellent. Well, that rounds out-
I mean Wednesday, Wednesday, the 14th.
Very good. That rounds out our committee reports. We're on to directors' items.
So, at the last meeting, the town manager came and presented about where the town was with 925 Mass Ave, the old LNM service station. Essentially, she was looking to keep the board up to date on where it is, and was looking for some feedback from the board on if there was a preference amongst the membership on how the town disposes of the property. Specifically, should it be an RFP that outlines specifically what use or how the properties were used, or should the town allow, should the town auction the property and take the highest bid and let the people who purchase it work within the framework of the existing bylaws? So I'm just gonna, I just put it on to kind of continue that discussion. I know the town manager indicated that she was not in an immediate rush for an answer, but I'll be keeping it on the agenda just to avoid it disappearing from our consciousness until we provide some manner of feedback.
Very good. When are we, when are we going to have discussion about feedback?
We can have it now if you'd like. If you want to set a date for when you have it, that would work too, and give people time to sort of compile and think and research. That would-
Well, my recollection of when she came to us, the town manager came to us, there were still some things pending before they were looking for input. No?
There's some things pending before they decide to dispose of the property. You know, what cost is, if we're going to get Phase Three cleanup, or planning money, all of those things. But my, my recollection was she was soliciting input on if the board had a position or opinion on what method of disposal would be reasonable. And she did say it'd be three or six months before they were ready to do so, and she didn't need immediate impact. But she was reaching out early to give everyone time to sort of intake that and think about and process what that might mean.
Well, it's that small parcel. I don't see that it's going to, I don't foresee any potential use by the town for, of it. I kind of, I kind of think it would be not a good idea to take on that liability. But I don't know how enforceable cleanup is. I don't know. I, the-
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just watched the meeting the other night relative to 925 Mass Ave, and one of the things that she mentioned is trying to get the funding from the Brownfields program to fund the cleanup. So it wouldn't be funding that the town would be doing. The cleanup would occur through a grant process. So the goal is to finish this Phase Three assessment, determine how much money is going to be needed in order to clean up the property. And I, my understanding from the meeting is that it looks, it appears to be a $250,000 cleanup grant that might be available. But the question is whether or not that's going to be sufficient to clean up the property based on the contaminants that were found.
There's several potential pools of money. Mass Development has cleanup money, and the MRPC is pursuing additional cleanup money through the Brownfields program. And there are some other, other funds that might be able to buttress those two.
Right. So the goal is to finish the Phase Three, and I'm not sure what the timeline is for that. I would be interested to know what that timeline is. But in my opinion, I shared your comment, Mr. Chairman, that it's a very small parcel. So I don't know that it would have a municipal use. But obviously, getting the parcel cleaned up and getting it either sold or become part of another parcel, or however, whatever we choose to do with it, in my opinion, is the first thing is to get that Phase Three set up. Because that will identify the cost of cleanup.
Well, I certainly don't have any valuable input.
Well, and as I mentioned to the town manager, I think the challenge of the property is not knowing what the cleanup cost is. You're not even sure if at auction you'd want to buy it through the tax title process, right? I don't know. I mean, I appreciate where the town manager is going, and I truly appreciate the fact that we're trying to take care of an eyesore. But at the same time, I look at the money that we're spending in all this assessment work and thinking of about a half a dozen town-owned buildings that are already in our care, custody, and control that we could have invested this money in, so.
The town hasn't invested any money in the assessments assessment yet. All of that money's come from the Brownfields program through MRPC. Dollars that are for investigation of hazardous and petroleum contaminated sites for cleanup and reuse.
Right. This is, the funding for all of these reports has come through grant programs, and that continues. So I would actually encourage continued participation, continued funding. I would be very concerned if it was coming out of the town's municipal funding, but it's not. It's coming through programs, the grant programs that were set up specifically for these types of sites to clean them up. So I applaud the town manager.
Grants for abandoned schools with asbestos in them?
Actually, there are. Actually, there are. There absolutely are. There are a lot, actually. And I've identified at least 10 potential grants that we would be eligible for. And I actually have-
Yeah, and I guess my point with this isn't so much who's footing the bill, because MRPC money comes from the taxpayer too. They don't, like, this isn't imaginary money. It all comes through state or local taxes, and so it's, in my mind, it's just as much our money as the local money we spend. But I just look around town, and I look at all these buildings that we own. And, I mean, we moved out of the old primary in August of '05. And 16 years have gone by, and we haven't assessed anything. But neither here or there. I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, 925 Mass Ave is going to sit with the Board of Selectmen. So, I mean, I guess we can weigh in on it, but ultimately, that's their jurisdiction, not ours.
It is-
Anytime we've been talking about this, in my mind, we should be spending on master plan, because we've been sitting on that egg for years now.
I don't disagree that we need to get refocused on master plan, and I agree with you. I'm frustrated that we haven't focused on it. But as far as 925 Mass Ave sitting in the hands of the Selectmen, I think that that's true. But I also think that the planning at the town center falls within the scope of the planning board, and at least providing a recommendation. So I think that, I think that, you know, our recommendation is important, because we are the planning board. I also share your frustration about the town buildings. I've mentioned on numerous occasions that there are many grants available for funding, specifically for redevelopment of sites, for demolition of sites. There are grants out there, and they are numerous. There are competitive grants, and somebody needs to take the bull by the horns and start submitting. But in order to submit for a grant, you have to have a clearly defined scope. And that's where the town of Lunenburg is unable to agree. But without a clearly defined scope and plan of what we're going to do, you know, we're going to redevelop this site for this, we're going to demolish this site because of this, we can't move forward with any grant applications, because we don't have a plan.
I couldn't agree more.
And I share your frustration, Tanner, believe me.
All right, anything else on 925?
Not for me.
So, Matt, this next one is the Brooks House. You received an email from the APDC regarding planning board input on how to make the Brooks House reusable. And I thought that when they came and spoke with the board, it was about a year ago. It was right before COVID hit. The discussion was about them separating that parcel off. I looked back, and it seemed that we gave them sort of the outline of how, how one would divide a parcel, and what some of the general items were within the village district. I don't know if you had any further discussion with the folks from the APDC about what they were looking for from the planning board's input? But this is on at your request.
Yeah.
Getting a tapping noise. Is anyone else hearing that? Was it just Mike?
Yeah, I muted myself, and it continued.
Yeah, I did too. I saw Matthew do it too.
I believe it's some, it's an artifact or something when Adam's speaking.
Okay, that's what I was thinking too. Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like someone tapping on a desk when you're speaking, Adam, which you're clearly not doing.
No, I'm not tapping on a desk.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, it is, though. Yeah, okay.
Definitely a tapping noise.
I have to invest in a new headset.
That's fine, just talk less.
Good time.
So, no, I have not had any further conversation with anyone at the APDC. I don't really see any use for that building. I went on the tour, the building tour. We walked through that. Looks like it's fallen in on itself, much like all the other buildings in disrepair. But that's considerably older, I believe.
Mr. Chair, could I ask for a little more context on this? Because this is a conversation that it sounds like came to the board very shortly before I joined. So I think it's fairly fresh for a lot of you, but that year out is just over my time on the board, so I don't really have scope for this.
Sure. Well, you know where the Brooks House is, right? Next to the- Sure. Well, you know where the Brooks House is, right? Next to the library? It's in front of the TC Passios next to the library.
I can't place it in my mind, but I will place it in Google Maps in just a second. So that's okay.
Okay. So it's a very old building. It's it's been recently used by the the what is John Landy? Is he the superintendent?
He's the facilities director for the school.
So it's been used by the schools primarily, I remember I think it was back in the nineties, the planning board had their office in there.
Up until 2007.
Oh, well, there you go. It it doesn't seem very useful. And again, I mean, my biggest concern still is that 55 acre parcel has a brand new school campus, has a really, really old building that nobody knows what to do with, and has a an old primary school that we're spending buttloads of money on and not getting anywhere with. So I mean, there it is. So I don't know. There's there's parking that's adjoint with the the library, but I don't think it's on the same parcel. I have the GIS up here.
I think the parcel goes this way.
Right.
It includes this section of parking.
Yeah, so there's.
Well, and that that parking, I believe, is on an easement. So it's
Yes, yes.
By the Brooks House, but it's for the library.
Yes.
And then there's also drainage, if I recall correctly, for the detention basin on either side of the Brooks House, because there's the primary basin on the left side, but then there's like a shallow basin that drains off that rear parking lot.
Yeah.
And two things that I'd add to the conversation is, one, I believe it was town meeting, spring of 2019. There was an article that allowed the Board of Selectmen to sell the structure off of the land. So keep the land, but sell the structure. And I don't think anybody ever acted on that. And that was partly in due due to the fact that the APDC was concerned about the future of the structure, because that house was actually on the parcel that is now the school campus. Yeah, yeah. But before all the schools were there, it was that house.
It was the farmhouse that went with that whole property.
And then the second thing I would add is, I believe the selectmen have put an article on the warrant this year that would make municipal properties exempt from the EPDC restrictions, in which case that structure would no longer be protected and the town wouldn't be inconvenienced by the EPDC process. So at that point, if that article passes, and I'm understanding everything correctly here, then the town could do whatever they wanted with that without demo delay and so on.
I think the selectman's article, I don't think it exempts the town. I think that it creates an appellate process for the town through town meeting and not through the court system in order to prevent the town from suing itself, because if the selectman were to approach the APDC and say, we want to demo a building under your control, and the APDC said, no. The selectman could theoretically demo it and the APDC could sue them to stop, but the selectman could say, well, that's great, but we're not going to fund access to council. So I think that the, and I haven't read the article, but my recollection was that it created town meeting as the appellate. So if the town got a negative determination to demo and they felt aggrieved by that, they would then have to petition the next town meeting. And whatever that was would be the standing decision as opposed to the town itself.
Well, I'll be very interested to read that article because I truly believe that if you're making rules, you need to follow the rules. So I don't agree with exempting yourself from the rules. So so I'll be interested to hear that discussion on town meeting.
Yeah, that'll be an interesting one. So I mean, as as far as as far as input from the planning board, my input would be that aside from the 37.65 feet of frontage that the future TCP building site has on Memorial Drive, that's the only frontage for whatever the the schools are going to piece off of land to go with that building. Now, it 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 doesn't really seem like the fruit of the labors of the building design committee are going to bear fruit yet. So that, again, that's the only frontage for the for that whole building. The school is going to maintain their driveway. I I just don't see a use for that building. It's it's just my opinion. But as far as to answer Mr. Brenner's question, the APDC sent an email out to me and I forwarded it to Adam looking for direction that I felt that we had already given them, and I think that Adam felt that same way. So I I don't think that we have much more direction to give them. Again, my opinion.
So I'm not necessarily, this isn't a planning board comment, but personally, I do see some uses for that building. Specifically, I would see that as an ideal. If I had the money, I would love to buy it as a coffee shop because of its proximity to the soccer fields and where kids play. I think that having a breakfast shop there, you would do very, very well for parents going over to get a cup of coffee and something to eat. So if I was a business person in the restaurant business, I'd snap it up in a second. Obviously, a huge obstacle right now is the fact that it's on that larger parcel. I think the idea of moving the building, I think it's cost prohibitive, given the the shape of the building. That's just my personal opinion. But I think it would make sense for the town to separate it and to sell it. But then the question becomes, how can you separate it and have it be a conforming use? So I don't know that I have any direction from a planning perspective, but personally, I see a lot of charm with the building. I think it it I think it could be a fantastic rest, carryout restaurant for breakfast, but just my my two cents.
All right. I don't see that we have a lot more input. All right. So I guess I guess that brings us up to the meeting schedule.
Actually, I do have one more thing that didn't make the agenda. I did finally receive a quote from MRPC on the master plan. So I'm working with the town manager and the assistant town manager to get that contract put together. And then jump into it with them.
You you received a quote?
Yes.
Can you share that?
Yeah.
Thirty six thousand dollars.
And what do we have in?
For the two chapters, for the community services and facilities and the land use chapter.
And we got 50,000 from capital planning?
Correct. We spent 6,800 on the population study.
Population thing, yeah.
I I would be very interested in seeing the quote itself because I'd like to see what they're proposing and what their what what their structure looks like. So I would be very interested in seeing that.
Yes. Yeah, it it's not a problem to put it in our packets for next meeting, right?
Nope, I can I can email it to you.
Excellent. All right. Anything else before we get to meetings at schedule?
I I do have a comment, but I think I'll save that for public comment.
Okay. So 6:30 remote participation until further notice. April 26th is our next meeting, where we have a hearing continuation for North End Subaru. Have they have they gotten to see all the people they need to see initially at least?
I believe that they're actually at Conservation this week. It was last week. And they're at the zoning board this week.
Okay, so the zoning board was the reason that we-
Correct, the reason that they got pulled.
So that'll be this week?
Right.
Okay. And then we've got a hearing for 101 Pleasant Street?
That's correct. Six lot subdivision.
How is the subdivision got a hearing?
Because it's a definitive subdivision. Requires a public hearing.
Okay.
They're they're creating, they're proposing to create road and lots.
Okay, very good. It's been a while since we had one.
Yep. Yes.
All right. Well, then we've got town meeting on May 1st, 9:00 AM.
And would you like to post a hearing, a hearing, a meeting at 8:30 before that, just in case?
It doesn't hurt. It doesn't cost us-
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, so just if if any last minute snafu comes up, we've got a a meeting for half an hour before the town meeting. If we need to rally the troops and address some issue or, you know, anything from script errors to oh, town council said this or something, you know, just the last minute things. We hardly ever use them. So May 1st is meeting, town meeting, May 10th and May 24th, I believe, are two planning board meetings?
That's correct.
All right. So do we have any ongoing items?
In the master plan will be the ongoing item going forward.
Okay. So public comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It was interesting that you brought up the aerial photo of the Brooks House because it's one of the things I wanted to talk about was the detention basin between the Brooks House and the library. I don't am not aware of any maintenance being done to that basin. I am sure that there were standards when it was created. I wasn't on the planning board, but I'm sure that there was a maintenance schedule and a stormwater plan. I don't think we're following it. So I would like to get an update and potentially put this on our agenda for our next meeting to find out what the maintenance schedule was to be, what should be being done there. It's completely overgrown, doesn't appear to have been cleaned out ever. And, you know, we're imposing stormwater restrictions on other individuals and requirements, and we need to be following our own. So I would like an update on what the requirements were for that basin, and I would like to know what the schedule is to clean it up.
I'm looking at the satellite photo in the GIS and I don't even, doesn't, it's not even clear where it is.
It's got that, it's right next to it. It's that big brown circle area. It's it's all fenced in right next to the library. It's got the wrought iron fence around it.
Oh, yeah, no, I I know where it is. I just-
Because because it's completely overgrown. It's completely filled in.
Very good. If 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 Adam, if you can do that for us?
I'll I'll pull it. I know that I've looked at other things that were approved in similar time and there was no O and A requirements in in the stormwater. So hopefully, this was further enough into the the odds that it did include it.
If it didn't, obviously, that can't function the way it is.
Correct, and I can reach out to the DPW director.
All right. Do we have any members of the clique with us still?
Still hanging around?
Yeah, I tend to linger. If I may, very quickly, I'd just like to make a public services announcement, partially as a member of the Parks Commission. As everybody knows, Earth Day Week is coming up, and I call it Earth Day Week because various entities in town have planned cleanup projects spread out all over town that will be going on on both weekends, either side of Earth Day and some other smaller projects during the days of the week of Earth Day. Check out the Turkey Hill Lions Club of site. I believe they're doing the the Town Common Bandstand area. Parks and Rec has a number of projects listed on their website. And the DPW is supplying, is going to be supplying trash bags for individual neighborhood cleanups. And I may be missing a couple of them, but if you check those sites, you'll find all the offerings. Thank you.
Thank you. Follow up on that. I think I think the DPW offers those trash bags all the time, don't they?
Actually, I think they do now that the new DPW director is aware of it.
So my understanding was that if you've got like a neighborhood cleanup, you can get bags from the DPW and then leave them in a a spot along the side of the road and the DPW will come pick them up? Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Any other comment, public or otherwise? Board comment or concerns? Then I guess we're ready for a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
I'd second that.
Excellent. Any further discussion about adjourning? Okay, roll call. All in favor, Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you all very much. Have a great evening.
Have a nice night.
Hi, everybody.
Good night, everybody.